Good evening, everyone. We're going to call to order the regular city council meeting for July 17, 2024. I would ask that everyone here will stand and pledge allegiance and will have an invitation by Mr. Wiggins from the Conservancy. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with dignity and justice for all.
Two minutes.
Well, we thank you for the day that you allow us to see. Thank you for your grace, your mercy, your peace, your joy, and your power. And as it says on the agenda, that it's an invocation which is inviting you into this mist. You know what's needed, oh God, and thank you that there is this opportunity to invoke your presence. And I ask that your presence will serve to put in order, to challenge, to review, to convict, to correct, to do everything that is necessary, oh God, so that things are done according to what is pleasing to you. Thank you for your forgiveness as we turn from our wicked ways, wherever they may be, and turn to you, so that we may treat one another as we should and be in grace in what we do. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Go call to-
Mayor Agg Powell.
Here.
Alda Lady Hampton Howson. Present. Alda Mary Burgen Jr. Do it. Alda Lady McDowell.
Present.
Alda Mary Baron.
Present.
We have four.
Okay. Approve the minutes for regular city council meeting minutes for June 19, 2024.
Mayor Agg Powell.
Yes.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes from the regular city council meeting, June 19, 2024, as presented with any noted corrections.
Second.
Motion by Alda Mary Baron, second by Alda McDowell. For approval of minutes for regular city council meeting minutes for June 19, 2024.
Mayor Agg Powell.
Yes.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes from the regular city council meeting, June 19, 2024, as presented with any noted corrections.
Second.
Motion by Alda Mary Baron, second by Alda McDowell, for approval of minutes for regular city council meeting minutes, June 19, 2024. Question? Roll call.
Alda Mary Baron.
Yes.
Alda Lady McDowell.
Yes.
Alda Lady Hampton Howson.
Yes.
Alda Mary Burgen Jr.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Approve the minutes for special city council meeting minutes for July 2, 2024.
Mayor Agg Powell.
Yes.
I make a motion and approve the special city council meeting minutes for July 2, 2024.
Second.
Motion by Lady Hampton, second by Alda Burgen, for approval of minutes for special city council meeting, July 2, 2024. Question? Roll call.
Alda Lady Hampton Howson.
Yes.
Alda Mary Burgen Jr.
Yes.
Alda Mary Baron.
Yes.
Alda Lady McDowell.
Hasting.
Motion carries.
Can I just need a roll call vote to acknowledge an error that we had, a typo here, just to go ahead and pay the bills for authorization claims and accounts. I just want to get a roll call before we vote on it and take action. So if you could roll call that, we'll-
Alda Mary Burgen Jr.
Yes.
Alda Lady Hampton Howson.
Yes.
Alda Mary Baron.
Yes.
Alda Lady McDowell.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, now authorization claims and accounts, bill lists.
Mayor Agg Powell.
Yes.
I make a motion and approve the authorization claims and accounts invoiced payments for July 17, 2024, which is followed corporate $290, $290.13. We have water sewer at $14,007.66. We have solid waste at $115,796.52. Motor fuel at $71,113.60, with the monitoring living complex at $20,037.64. We also have a roller rink at $441.45, which gives us a total of $511,687.1. We also have manual chair at $24,740 even, which gives us a grand total of $536,427.1.
Second. Motion by Lady Hampton, second by Alda Burgen, to approve the bill lists, authorization claims and accounts. Question? Roll call.
Alda Lady Hampton Howson.
Yes.
Alda- Alda Mary Burgen Jr.
Yes.
Alda Lady McDowell.
Yes.
Alda Mary Baron.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, I just want to mention something. I was going to ask the council to consider opening the floor for the Thornton Township assessor who was going to stop by this evening. I know under Alda Lady McDowell, before she's going to mention a gathering that's going to be here at City Hall to put all the bodies, Thornton Township assessor. And I would even, I know that I'm going to venture late to get the Bremen assessor out to talk with the residents and rats. But she's not here, so we'll just go with the announcement under your report when you give in anything that you may want to add. I know I'll have a couple of words under my report, but we'll just go ahead and move along and go to the city attorney's report.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, members of the council and members of the public, with respect to the city attorney's report, it appears under seven. First, we have a proposed ordinance providing for the year 2024 residential property tax rebate program for homeowners of the city of Markham tax reimbursement.
And thank you, attorney. If I can just jump in on your report for two seconds. I have talked with the council about this ordinance. They've received a draft copy. Actually, I think they just got it not very long ago, but there are some amendments that still need to be made with it. We would like to make sure that we're moving along. So I think that we're probably just going to pass it with the amendments by tomorrow to just make sure that it's kind of regrouped and rebated off of the resident.
Mayor Agg Powell.
Yes.
All right, I'm going to make a motion that we waive the 48-hour reading for ordinance number 24-0-2392. It's an ordinance providing for the year 2024 residential property tax rebate program for homeowners of the city of Markham.
Second.
Motion by Alda Mary Baron, second by Alda Lady Hampton, for waiving the reading for the ordinance providing the 2024 residential property tax rebate program for homeowners for the city of Markham tax reimbursement. Roll call.
Alda Mary Baron.
Yes.
Alda Lady Hampton Howson.
Yes.
Alda Lady McDowell.
Yes.
Alda Mary Burgen Jr.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mayor Agg Powell.
Yes.
Okay, I make a motion that we approve this ordinance with the exceptions, there's a couple of, there's some language and there's a paragraph that needs to be removed, but just so we can keep the ball moving with the Treasury Department, I am going to make a motion that we approve this ordinance with those exceptions.
Okay.
Second.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Alda Mary Baron, second by Alda Lady McDowell, for approving the ordinance as read with corrections and amendments said. That's it. Roll call.
Alda Mary Baron.
Yes.
Alda Lady McDowell.
Yes.
Alda Lady Hampton Howson.
Yes.
Alda Mary Burgen Jr.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next, we have under seven, B of proposed ordinance adopting the 2021 International Property Maintenance Code with certain amendments as the property maintenance code for the city of Markham.
Mayor Agg Powell.
Yes.
Make a motion to adopt ordinance number 24-0-2393, ordinance adopting the 2021 International Property Maintenance Code with certain amendments as the property maintenance code for the city of Markham.
Okay, we'll have that to be that you're waiving.
I'm sorry, waiving. I'm sorry.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Second.
Second.
Motion by Alda Lady McDowell, second by Alda Burgen, for waiving the reading for adopting the 2021 International Property Maintenance Code with certain amendments as property maintenance code for the city of Markham. Roll call.
Alda Lady McDowell.
Yes.
Alda Mary Burgen Jr.
Yes.
Alda Mary Baron.
Yes.
Alda Lady Hampton Howson.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mayor Agg Powell.
Yes.
I make a motion to approve ordinance number 24-0-2393, adopting the 2021 International Property Maintenance Code with certain amendments as the property maintenance code for the city of Markham.
Second. Motion by Alda Lady McDowell, second by Alda Mary Baron, for approval of ordinance adopted, the 2021 International Property Maintenance Code as read. Our question?
Yes. I know the Building Department and the Ordinance Department is trying to simplify some of the restrictions, but I also believe that we need to, we need to identify the majority of requests in those two departments and try and do some kind of handout or a booklet so it makes it easier. People are in this hallway every day and they're totally confused. And, you know, it's because we've changed our ordinances, we've changed our regulations, and I'm not, I'm not against that, but the average homeowner wouldn't understand how to read, how to navigate through these ordinances. And I just think that we have to have a way that we can, some kind of handout that we can have here at City Hall so they could pick it up and, you know, I mean, probably 90% or plus of the building permits are, have to do with the home, driveway, siding, windows, what have you. And if we could just come up with a small handout that, for all intents and purposes, I'll just say dummy it down, just so the average person can get through this with the least amount of delays, because, you know, sometimes people put in building permits and they don't get it back for two weeks. And that, to me, just, that's, that's wrong, you know?
Okay, I'll definitely take it up with Mr. Champion, with the Building Department, discuss it with them, and we can streamline information, you know, to the public, definitely about the changes. We'll take it a little further than that and make sure that they have something, some other things that are moving along. I will tell you, though, all of our waiting in the hall for that.
Huh?
They're not waiting in the hall just for this. Let me-
Oh, I understand, you know, but, you know, even if we had just a brief explanation of why we need to see the deed to your house, why?
Right.
Okay, because most people will, I'm paying all the bills, I got all the bills in my name. But see, they don't realize the legal complications. And there's got to be a way to put it in more simple language that will help the average, the average homeowner.
Right. It's, no, I agree, Alda, my office deals with it like every day, every-
Well, and I know you know this.
And, you know, I definitely think that downstairs, try to make sure that, you know, if it's coming-
And nobody working hard, we write simple-
Downstairs. And that's really what happens, more than I like, you know, but we want to take care of people, we want to make sure that they understand it, so we make sure that we're walking through with them. So I'm 100% with you, definitely. So we'll do that.
That's all I got to say.
All right, then anybody else? Not? Roll call.
Alda Lady McDowell.
Yes.
Alda Mary Baron.
Yes.
Alda Mary Burgen Jr.
Yes.
Alda Lady Hampton Howson.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, next we have under seven, C of proposed resolution concerning the purchase of municipal vehicles for the city of Markham from the village of New Lennox.
Mayor Agg Powell.
Yes.
I make a motion that we approve, that we make a motion that we approve resolution number 24-AR-722, for the city of Markham, we recognize that high quality equipment must be made. So, I'm sorry, I'm relative to concern the purchase of a municipal vehicle for the city of Markham from the village of New Lennox.
There you go.
I'm sorry, I apologize.
That's good.
I'm lying on here, man.
That's okay.
Looking down.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Alda Lady Hampton, second by Alda Lady McDowell, for approval of resolution concerning the purchase of municipal vehicles for the city of Markham from the village of New Lennox. And before we do roll call, I want to say thank you, council, again. You all are really pitting out the park. This is more improvement to the fleet. It's really, I don't think we've ever had it like this, so really good. Appreciate what you all are doing to get us where we're at. I think that you'll see a big difference from, this is a huge person for what we're doing, so congratulations to you all to keep the needle moving. So with that, roll call.
Alda Lady Hampton Howson.
Yes.
Alda Lady McDowell.
Yes.
Alda Mary Burgen Jr.
Yes.
Alda Mary Baron.
Yes.
Motion carries.
That's all, that's all that I have this evening, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Attorney General. You're welcome.
If anyone is here, they have, want to speak during public session, please sign in at your board.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
That's your call.
If you want to speak during public session, please sign in down here for them, and your name will be called when the public session is open. Thank you.
Okay, Madam Burke, to City Council.
Yes, I have a, first, I'd like to read a proclamation for National Night Out, which is Tuesday, August 6, 2024, whereas the National Association of Townwives, N A T W, sponsors a national community building campaign on Tuesday, August 6, 2024, entitled National Night Out. And whereas the National Night Out campaign provides an opportunity for neighbors in the city of Markham to join over 38 million neighbors across 18,000 communities from all 50 states, U.S. territories, and military bases worldwide. And whereas National Night Out is an annual community building campaign that promotes strong police-community partnerships and neighborhood camaraderie to make our neighborhoods safer, more caring places to live and work. And whereas neighbors in the city of Markham assist the city of Markham Police Department through joint community building efforts and support National Night Out 2024. And whereas it is essential that all neighbors of the city of Markham come together with police and work together to build a safer, more caring community. Now, therefore, we do, we do hereby call upon all neighbors of the city of Markham to join the city of Markham and National Association of Townwives in support for National Night Out on Tuesday, August 6, 2024. Further, let it be resolved that we do hereby proclaim Tuesday, August 6, 2024, as National Night Out in the city of Markham. Therefore, I, the mayor, Mayor Ag, Mayor Roger Agg Powell, do hereby proclaim August 6, 2024, as National Night Out in the city of Markham, Illinois.
Mayor Agg Powell.
Yes.
I make a motion that we approve that proclamation as read.
Second.
I guess I could almost say all in favor for that. Yeah. All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Okay, next I have business license, Saint Nick's of Markham, D B A, D B A, Lecky Fire and Grill. Is anyone here for that? Please step to the podium.
Good evening, Saint Nick's of Markham. What is it? It's-
Lecky.
Lecky?
Lecky.
Lecky, okay. We have met a few times with Alda Mary Baron, Alda, and Administrator about the, I guess you'll be taking over but creating new. You're at the entity's location, correct?
Correct.
And if I'm saying this properly, we said, we said Saint Nick's of Markham because that is part of the LLC and you're going to take over at that location and then make it new. Am I saying that right?
Yes.
Okay, I'm just trying to streamline or cut to the chase. I've used that word twice tonight, people are trying to move along to make sure that we can get you where we need to go. So this is Alda Mary Baron, this is your war, so if you have anything you'd like to say about it?
Oh, I've met with both of them and they have a, they have a unique plan. They want to do a little bit of entertainment. They're still going to need some work in the, in the bar as far as they want to build a kitchen and they're going to offer a different kind, a variety of foods. And, you know, their business model would be very interesting and it's something we currently don't have in Markham. So because of that, then I'm going to make the recommendation that we grant them a business license.
Okay, and just before somebody second's that recommendation and we'll close the floor to them and then make it official that way, Mr. Champion, did you have anything additional?
Just, well, I think that the direction in Markham is going in and needing more sit-down restaurants and eateries. I think that this new establishment would give us a mixture of a certain culture, the African cuisine. And I've looked at the menu and a lot of good vegetarian options on there as well, so I just think it'd be a good fit.
And I too, before I yield to the other council members, I met with them and I thought that, you know, they have a West African cuisine. I thought it was different. I thought that, you know, I did have a little reservation at first, but that's kind of normal because, you know, when we talk about bars, we really, Markham has had to share, had to deal with those things. You are here for that, but some of us live that way, we live here and deal with it. So I was pleasantly surprised about the way that you intend to do business, so we're really glad to hear what you're going to do. So, council, do you all have anything else you'd like to add or add or anything? Okay, then we'll close the floor to you, you can have a seat and let the council take action on the line.
I make a motion that we close the floor to Saint Nick's Bar.
I would transfer your current idea, your new concept to the city, and hopefully everyone agrees with it. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. All in favor for closing the floor?
Aye.
To have the council, what's your plea?
I made a recommendation that we grant them a business license.
Second. Motion by Alda Mary Baron, second by Alda McDowell, for approval of business license for Lecky Fire Grill, Saint Marks, Saint Nick's of Markham. Roll call.
Alda Mary Baron.
Yes.
Alda Mary Burgen Jr.
Yes.
Alda Lady Hampton Howson.
Yes.
Alda Lady McDowell.
Hasting.
Motion carries.
Okay, move along. See, where'd you go? Oh, okay, see the, well, see the Building Department about licensing, we still have another step to go with my office, with the literature, okay? All right, thank you.
That's all I have.
All right, so over to the mayor's report. Very briefly, you know, it's really something, something kind of raining on your parade which the, literally had storms to just do that. I was going to just rave about how I thought we had such a wonderful, wonderful festival. And I thought it was really nice, and then here comes a storm to kind of outdo it. But that's okay, we'll, you know, I still think that we had a good time with the festival. But if you always, where you have a good time on one hand, you have to get back to work on the other, and that's kind of what's happened with the storm overshadowing something. But before I mention that, I just want to mention to the public about some of the meetings that I have been involved with, with dealing with the property tax issue and the errors that have been made, as well as some of the over-assessments and some of the things that have happened in Cook County. So I said that before I say Markham, before I just say Markham, because it is a Cook County issue. And I definitely think that it's happened not just from the assessments of whether the assessor's handled his office, but also the way the Board of Review has handled his office. And so I've met with a lot of other mayors. Matter of fact, I piled into a car with seven mayors to go downtown to meet with a lot of legislators about what's going on with property tax and what are the solutions. So I just heard today, it was only from hearing today, that I guess the Cook County Treasurer was going to give people time to pay their bill, and I believe this is without penalty. So I'm only hearing that, but those are the only kind of concessions that anybody's going to probably make in this, in this tax year. So we're trying to find other means to help people deal with their tax bill so they don't lose their homes or their property. So we're doing what we can, but it's very unfortunate, as much as we promote business, is that the, the business has got a break. We had gotten a break from the assessor, and it appeared that the Board of Review turned around and kind of redid things and gave that back to business. So that's, that's what we kind of went through as local legislators, with the two of them pointing at each other. And so that's not going to do any of us any good. In the meantime, we were expecting tonight, at least the, for the Thornton Township assessor to stop by and try to let people know what they can do in the meantime about making sure that their bill is dealt with in the right manner, you get the right exemptions and getting you ready for the next time to appeal, because right now I believe that's closed. But we've had a couple of community meetings. We have an East Side Block Club and a West Side Block Club, and we've addressed some of these issues. One thing for sure, if anybody was paying attention tonight and noticed that this, this body, this council passed an ordinance for this year for residential tax rebate program, and that's a tax reimbursement of about $500 to the homeowners. And so we're doing our part to try to do something in reducing tax. And the way that we do that is to continue, continue to set the stage for business to be here and make a viable community for people to do business in. But we also got to make sure that the other people in other places and legislators are doing their job. There is some need to deal with the tax code in Cook County and certainly some state law that needs to be dealt with when it comes to taxes. So we're doing all that we can do to fight to get this right for everyone. And it's not, again, just remain to Markham, it is a county issue. And it's not, again, just remain to Markham, it is a county issue. If you ask me, it's a state of Illinois issue. I've got some ideas about dealing with it and I've told some of the legislators what I thought we ought to do or try to do. I'll say this and then I'll go to my next subject. I've got ideas to believe that it's, there's, I'm part of a mayor or local black caucus. There's a lot of mayors in that caucus that have underserved communities, Markham. I'd like to get us out of the underserved category, but we're there. I'll take advantage of it while we're there, while we're fixing what we're, where we're at. I'll say that much. But I still don't believe that we should have the same measuring scale as Ashonburg or Hoffman Estates when it comes to the tax rate. That's my belief and I think that the General Assembly should do something in that regard until we come out that threshold of being underserved or whatever they want to call us and we get healthy and you move us out of it and then we pay like everybody else. But if we're said be underserved, why aren't we doing the same thing everybody else is doing and people lose their homes? Because we don't have the same medium for income that somebody else does, but we have the same scale. So, it's something that can be done. There's something that can be done about it. And that's what, you know, that's some of my thoughts, my proposal about it. So, if somebody else has ideas, please, let's go after this together to try to make it, you know, make, make everybody whole. I know that, again, we're doing our part. We're trying to have good government here. We're trying to make this a good place to live, a good place to do business and that's what, that's how you pay tax. But when the county does all this, when they got these crazy rates and the state has a crazy way of formulas and calculations and we're subject to that, well, it doesn't almost matter what you do. Because now, now you're subject to that, you're doing all the good work you can do to try and pay your bills and pay them on time and everything else and this is what happens. So, I'm disappointed about it. My, my tax bill went up. Looks like the assessor can't be in, so we'll make room for her, council, if you all want for her to maybe say some things. But most, if there's a lot of questions about taxes, this is not going to be the setting for it tonight. She'll, we have an announcement of some times here in Markham where we'll have that to where you'll have some question and answer. So, you'll obviously be able to reasonably ask something in your three minutes tonight if you want. And this dials could answer myself and anybody else on the dials. But I just believe as the leader of the city and the, and the council here as well, we want to try and tell you, we're doing what we need to do and we're, we're, we are all affected just like you are. So, if somebody in this room got a bad tax bill, it came to my address too. And so, you know, so if you're mad at your house, come by my house. You'll see, I'm, I'm bothered by it too. I'm mad about it too, so. So, with that, let me go over to, just to let everyone know that we are getting things cleaned up. Everybody's, again, you know, the, the stuff that people are kind of upset about with a tree on the house, which is, is a horrible thing, or on your car, or you can't get out to your house to go to work or get down the street. We're doing what we always do of getting that straight. And, and why am I, you know, I, I mean, that's just the routine of what we're supposed to do and we, we do just that. And I'm saying that because we've had some, I was telling my wife, we've had some people just be unreasonable. You know, it's like, you know, and about, you know, I give you about four months and you're going to be fussing about some snow. So, you won't even remember some of this stuff. You'll be, you'll, that'll be your new issue and we'll deal with it. But, you know, that's why I said to you all, Alman, about, you know, we're trying to get things in order for people. So, when you brought that up about the building, we want to do that. So, anyway, just to the residents and everybody else in businesses, we're getting things cleaned up. We'll keep after it, that's for sure. And some of these things that are in people's easements, that's not something that we're, we're really dealing with. I know all the people have to deal with that all the time, talking about easements. But right now, we're, now we're dealing with trees in front of property and out the street and all of, I know all of this, every one of you, I've talked to you, you know, middle of the night about this since it's been happening. So, all you all, Alman, are working. No one can say that the all the people are not working. They are working because I'm hearing it. So, so don't hesitate still to let us know how you feel about it. We still want to know. If it's not, something's not working or it's not fixed, we'll find a way to do that, but we still have to know about it. So, let us know. With that, that's the end of my report. Over to the, well, I do have one other thing I'll just mention is, I don't think anyone's here from Sherwood tonight, but I'm going to mention, we are going to fix Sherwood. We talked about getting that street repaired and it is, it's a bad street. It's kind of reminds me of what we went through when I got in office on the east side. I don't think you could find a street that was any good on the east side and then we went over to Country Air and it was bad. And so, we had actually had a couple of streets that were laid out on the east side to get fixed and I'm looking this way when I'm saying that because we got all the infrastructure work that's going to happen over there. We can't put the street down.
That's right.
So, we're moving into Canterbury, which is in need. And actually Canterbury was probably the worst hit out of the storm too. Just like, you didn't have Country Air like that, did you? Remember, we, we, Country Air was terrible, you know, but we went through that. So, anyway, Sherwood, you know, I just wanted to mention that. That's going to be a real blessing to see that street. I know me and you spent some time over there last week with other things and I'm just glad we'll be able to go over and tell the residents that street is horrible, so, you know. But there'll still be other repairs throughout the community anyway. This is just a specific street that I'm able to mention out of a grant that was going to knock it out. But we got a street repair going on all over the city, so it doesn't matter, you know. So, your wards will still get, you know, an abundance of work, so. With that, Mr. Champion, go right ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, members of the public and the council. Mayor, I'm going to start off with just a real-time update. I've been in contact with ComEd and before I came down this evening, I just wanted to get the number of estimated customers still without service. We right now have about 947 residents that are still without service. The percent of the restored right now is at a 77% rate. They're expecting that between this evening and Friday that everybody should have their service restored. I will keep in contact with our account rep for ComEd, but as of right now, we still have 947 residents still without power. So, we had about a, excuse me, there was a 4,256 that was, that was impacted because of the storm. And I know the mayor and I were on the phone almost to midnight, the night that the storm came through, just kind of trying to troubleshoot with public works and get people out to move some of the debris out of the road. So, stay tuned, we're still working at it, but be patient.
I didn't raise my voice that night, did I?
Just a tad bit, Mayor, about something, but we're talking a lot about that. With that being said, we go ahead and go through the normal report. The city will be applying for a $600,000 grant from the Illinois Department of Natural Resources through the Open Space Land and Development Grant Program for renovation for Country Air Park. There is some funding, funding that's available and I know that Country Air has a park that needs some attention and we're going to focus on that with that funding. Also, the city received another $40,000 grant from the Illinois Environmental Protection Agency for the lead service line inventory program. So far, the city has received a total of $160,000 for the inventory of the water service line materials. Our engineer is working with Public Works and the Water Department to get letters out to the remaining homes, that's about 1,000, to schedule a date and time for the water service inspections. The city has already, the city has already has, has the water service material information about, for about 3,500 homes. The deadline for us to report to the Illinois Environmental Protection Agency is September 1st, so stay tuned for that. Also, our engineer is working on a technical memo and findings from his field visit with Alderman Bertrand for residents that have been affected by some serious flooding at 15220 and 15230 South Kezzy Avenue. We've identified the, I think the root cause. I know that we have some drone footage that will display some of the troubled areas as well. But we should have a report, Alderman Bertrand, sometime next week finalized about that particular issue over there. Also, the city will be meeting with the Cook County, Cook County's Consulted Metro Strategies to discuss possible flooding projects to be implemented in a Phase Two of the Cook County Resiliency Planning Program. That meeting is being scheduled by the end of this week. Also, the city of Markham was awarded a, a grant for $459,000 and that was for the construction of three alleyways in Ward III. The purpose of this project is to help with flooding in the area that's taken on stormwater runoff and infiltrating down, down the pavement, right behind BP Gas Station. The engineering design is currently underway with construction anticipated in early spring of 2025. Also, the Metropolitan Water Reclamation District, I want to, because I don't think people really know about this, but I think we need to take advantage of this program. The Metropolitan Water Reclamation District has a rain barrel program for residents in Cook County. They deliver it to any resident in Cook County for $43. There is a rain barrel, I can't, I don't have a good picture of it, but this particular rain barrel weighs about 20 pounds when empty and can hold up to 55 gallons when full of water. The barrel weighs about 500 pounds when, when, when it's full. The overflow opening lets the connect, you can connect a hose to it, but you can also use it for, you can use it for, or to wash your car, water, water your lawn or garden and clean tools and bikes. But it's a, it's a, it's really a great barrel to have in your backyard or next to your drainage system. And I know Bree loves flowers, so it can, it can really help.
I just stated that, I said, I have a few questions.
Yeah. And also, June 26th, we hosted a, a solar energy workshop here with the Department of Energy. And it was a great, great informational session. I know that Alderman Baron stopped by, the clerk stopped by, I know Alderman Bertrand, but it's a lot of good, great resources that are available for clean energy projects. So, we want to make sure that we're at least hosting a couple of these informational workshops for our residents so you all can be aware of some of the things that are, that are available for, for you as well and, and our businesses. Also, we had the, last but not least, had the opportunity to stop by the Nature Conservancy's final day. I guess they were sending, sending the interns off and I know that they had presentations last week. I want to say it was last Wednesday, Thursday, it was last Thursday. But I have to tell you, I did call the mayor afterwards. I was really impressed with those young environmental thinkers and their presentations. It was good to see a good, diverse group, I think, as far as where I'm at or in the North Shore area. I think one student, I think he was coming here, it took him an hour and a half to get here every day, but I was really impressed to see those young, young people. I know, Mr. Williams, you're probably going to, may speak about it during public session, but we were really enthused to witness such a good, good group that's really concerned about the environment, really excited about that. Also, Mayor, just one last thing. There will be a job fair for Wind Creek Casino that's opening this fall. The job fair is going to be on August 7th. There's about 1,000 jobs that will be available. We will be posting information on our website, but just keeping my, Wind Creek Casino is opening this fall in Homewood. That concludes my report, Mayor.
Mr. Champion, I want to just ask you, I know we worked on, I, I heard you mentioned about some, some engineering being done. Did we, you're doing, you've got some things going on for Alderman Bertrand. We, do we address what was happening in Alderman Baron's ward with the engineer? Do you know about?
Which, which, because I know we...
Did the engineer come out?
Over 154th Place and 155th. He had eight blocks.
Wait, which, where, Alderman Baron?
Huh?
What, what location?
3900 block of 154th Place and between 155th Street.
I don't know if, I, I don't know if he got over there yet, man.
Well, that's okay, because we, we, we got to get, we've got to get him to, to Alderman Baron for sure.
Okay.
And me and Alder, Alder Lady Hampton have been, I, I've been delaying that.
Okay.
By you, because I'm on my list and then I just don't do it, but...
But I make notes.
We got this rolling. Well, you know, Alderman Bertrand, he did me a little different, so, so he just kind of hit me up and made...
He was charger.
Yeah, he was more charger, but he had backup though. That's really with this, he brought a pasta. Hey, these were some seniors that weren't playing about that water. So, I knew that, so. So, anyway, we'll, we'll make sure we get it right. So, Mr. Champion, get a quazy with both of them. She's got an issue on Justine.
Okay.
He's got an issue on 154th.
Okay.
I know that, I thought for sure we looked at it.
I thought...
I think a quazy did go to 154th.
Okay, because...
I think he did go.
All right, I can confirm.
Just, just check it out.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, we'll keep it moving. Going over to, well, let me ask, before we go into all the matter reports, if you all would just consider very quickly to do the, go back to special presentations for a moment so we can hear from the Thornton Township Assessor just for a few minutes.
I make a motion that we open the floor to the Township, Thornton Township Assessor.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
As having, good, good evening, Mr. Hobart, Cook County, I'm sorry, Thornton Township Assessor. We appreciate you, you can stand there or holding whatever you like to speak to us all, however you like. I know you're used to doing this and we're, we're glad that you showed up before the public speaks so we have somebody else that they can go after.
We had a couple of outdoor engagements, so I said I got to leave to get to Markham.
We're glad you came by.
But I'm thankful for the invitation.
Yes.
It's always a pleasure, joy coming here with the mayor and the all-in call. It's my job, try to do it as well as my ability. So, you guys got more business to take care of, so don't track me too short. So, I know everyone's concerned about this property tax bill that they just received. So, we're going to back up to last year. Last year around May of June, letters were mailed out to from the Cook County Assessor's Office, letting everyone know in South suburbs what their new value is going to be and what their, what their old value was, what their new proposed value is going to be. Also, on that letter, it gave you a picture of your property. It also gave you a deadline in which to file an appeal to try and get that value lower. And I know a lot of people didn't look at that letter. Probably saw that coming from the Cook County Assessor's Office and said, no, I'm not going to do this because I'm guilty too. But when you get these letters, please open them up. Because a lot of people blew that deadline to file an appeal. So, what happened was that their taxes on the second installment tax bill is based on that new value. This new value takes place every three years where town for, Cook County goes up for reassessment. So, the city starts off, I mean, North suburbs is reassessed, the city and then the South suburbs and then back around to the North suburb. So, these values are pretty much good for three years. However, we have an opportunity to file an appeal this year for next year's taxes. We're going to do a pre-filing. I have three dates in which I'm going to come back to Markham. You will have all the forms we fill out to file an appeal. So, that form will be for Cook County Assessor's Office. And what my office does, we keep, keep those forms and... And what my office does, we keep those forms, and we keep those forms. And when the Board of Review opens up the process, we take that same form and we fill it out for the taxpayer, and then we send that information to the Board of Review. And we do that just in case you forget, you're out of town, you're ill. A number of things could happen, and we try to do as easy as possible for mayor and for his constituents or their town. The only immediate relief that you can get on this tax bill is if you did not get your exceptions deducted. That would be homeowners, seniors, and creatives, the single homeowners, disabled veterans. So look at your bill, make sure that your exceptions were deducted, if it was not deducted. Now, I'm happy you guys come all the way out to Thornton. You can go right there to Markham Courthouse, they're not taking people in based on ordinance. Just go in there with that tax bill, take your ID, make sure that it's updated, that it doesn't expire, and they'll give you the justice deal right there on the spot, okay? Everyone knows about the exemptions, the homeowners and seniors and all of that, okay? The reason why this bill increased, it escalated like it did again, is because of the reassessment. The Cook County Assessor looks at the sales trend for the past three years. It could be arable, it could be foreclosure, it could be people purchasing properties, they're flipping. So they'll purchase a property for maybe thirty thousand, they'll go in and gut it out, put it right back on the market for maybe a hundred, two hundred thousand. This affects your value. Even though all you're doing is living in this house and you're keeping it clean, this bill affects your value. Also, the Cook County Assessor took back the COVID relief. He gave us the COVID relief, the COVID was out, and that relief was anywhere from eight to twelve percent. So he took that back, so now this bill is constantly going up, follow me? Okay. So then, the state's inflation, um, we multiply it increase when the state needs more money to operate their living and their loving, then that number will go up, the tax dollar amount due will increase. So that's three years, we got the fourth one, is that the tax rates went down. So we got less off for our exceptions. The higher that tax rate is, the more you're going to get off on exceptions. For instance, we're going to say in twenty twenty-two, the tax rate in Markham was twenty point zero. You're looking at two thousand dollars off for a homeowner's exception. Is one thousand, like ten thousand, which is a standing amount for a homeowner's exception, times your tax rate, okay? So that was twenty-one hundred. So twenty twenty-three taxes roll around, and that tax rate drops down to eighteen point zero. So what's the difference? Instead of you getting that twenty-one now, you're getting eighteen hundred deducted off that bill. So that rate is affecting your homeowners, your seniors, your disabled homeowners exemption. So all of those are the reasons why those, why the bill escalated like it did, okay? Left some questions down later.
You know what, I think it's gonna be better if you do them later, because this will turn into a whole tax-
Okay, if they're not going to come out here, I have three dates.
Yeah, she's gonna announce the dates, you can mention them now, but go ahead and then we'll-
July twenty-third, July twenty-third from ten to one, right here in the council chambers. She's bringing a group of four people, so we're trying to accommodate the crowd. We're doing it for Thornton Township. I am actually working with the assessor from Bremen Township to get some dates from him, so we can help those in Bremen. So July twenty-third from ten to one, August twenty-first, August twenty-fourth from ten to one, and September seventh from ten to one. And these, all of these will take right here in our council chambers.
And we'll post that on all of our media points as well. But as the assessor has said, you can go, in the meantime as well, to our court, court building where the county assessor is at, and you can take care of some of the business over there about those exemptions. So you don't have to travel to the Township Office, either Township Office, that's like, just go next door. So we appreciate you coming out. I know that this can turn into a tax meeting, and we don't want to do that.
No, thank you for that.
No, thank you so much, we appreciate it.
Make a motion to close the floor to the Thornton Township Assessor.
On favor.
Aye.
As having, let's go over to all the matters and ward reports, and we'll start with Alderman Baron.
I'm gonna try and make this real short. The Family Fest was a very, very enjoyable time. And I can't thank the city employees that made it a huge success. I, even with the threat of a storm coming, people really seemed to have a good time, and it was very nice. Number two, you know, the tax bills went out. I did, I sat in a meeting with Mr. Caggy. He explained a couple of the basic things that when people get their tax bill, they should check it for corrections. I've mentioned this to a bunch of seniors, and they just assume that everything is automatic. And, you know, I tell them, you know, last year, we got, we got a postcard. Maybe that was the mistake, because a lot of people, I think, disregarded it, but, you know, the first thing that caught my attention is my house probably weighs forty to sixty percent value. And if your house is worth more, so are your taxes, so. But like he said, the most important things is if you think that the, you know, they've got their own people that do this. I know from my-
Mr. Champion, five hundred and forty-seven of the nine hundred and forty-seven people must still be in my ward.
Wow.
Because I still have, still have no follow-up from Central Park to Kessi from one hundred and fifty-nine to one hundred and fifty-fourth. It seems like they might have been a microverse, the way that they came through that area and the trees that are down, because there's old trees and a lot of roots. I mean, you can see the roots on the property. But thank you for the update. I've been out there with all the other, monitoring what's going on. And I know there, it's been told the pride would be the day before they're back. And Con Ed is out there, they're out there with the trucks. The last notice that I got from them was that they were sending one trucks out to cut the stuff off the tree. So I guess it would be enough to the city to pick up that stuff once and get it down. And I'm telling my residents, just, just like everybody, I want to thank you for the five blocks of Green Heaven.
Yep.
That project there runs from Harmon Avenue to Sawyer, in the alleys behind State Farm, BP Amoco, the daycare service, as well as the D F Center. So thank you for that. I also want to, with our grant, I've spoken to the Nature Conservancy, and Dr. Williams has said that you'd be willing to work with us on that project, because it is adjacent to the Nature Conservancy.
Oh, great.
So I'm putting you out of the doubt. The, thank you for the C E program. One of the things that I know that our job is, is to find resources for our community. My job is to take the resources that the city has and take them into the community. Make sure that people can call up and say that they know anything about it. I believe that during this process, it can bring a lot more people that we haven't had an opportunity to talk to over the course of the year. I want to mention something, Mayor, cherry lane, you asked me about asphalt in the street. Cherry lane, I might do that.
Is it, that wasn't me, you repented?
Yes.
Oh, we did cheer, we did cheer. All right. No, we worked, I mean, we got, you know, we got a budget to work on, so let's get together on that.
Okay, I also want to make an announcement, Ray Cross was here this weekend. There, we have three, they are installing smoke protectors. I couldn't understand why we need these smoke protectors, simply because several years ago, my son burned up a house. He was out frying a turkey, and the turkey grease went up. It was below zero, and he was out underneath the house trying to fry a turkey. And there were no fire lines in the house, those smoke protectors. And it burned up the house, it was also a forty thousand dollar home in Chicago because there were no smoke protectors in the house. And he shouldn't have been, well, he did, but with that being said, I'm really trying to push this program, they're gonna install them asleep. I got to do, fill out the applications, such as Seaway Cross and Round, that's what they're doing. They're taking these applications, really be here at our event for the tax school parade, and they will protect them.
Okay, thank you.
Make a motion that we open the floor to the public.
Second.
On favor.
Aye.
As having, good evening, public. If you want to address the city council, you need to sign in, and you want to sign?
Yes, it will be up here if you want to sign in. If you haven't signed in and desire to.
And we're going to call your name off, and you'll have three minutes to address the city council.
Eugene Hall. If you want to sign in, I'm up here to sign.
Okay, if you don't, good evening, Eugene Hall.
My name is Eugene Hall, I'm owner of Big Boys and Sons. I moved out here in September last year, put in a business license, I was denied. I was never told why I was denied. I tried to speak to you a couple of times, but can't be offered tax. Why was I denying my business license? And property, nobody never told you nothing. And I'm getting kind of riled by the fire chief, why you still here? You ain't put in for this, and you ain't doing this. And I'm here to ask the council, why was I denied for something that I was not aware of? The ordinance they have out here. So when I moved in, I rented the place before I came to City Hall, which I was not aware of, because where I came from, it's all hard, it's different. Rent, give, pay, here they say before they come to the City Hall and get a permission. I was not aware, and then they took my money, and never told me nothing. So I came up here on my own. I brought my granddaughter with me, because I got a letter from my landlord that's trying to reach you to explain to you that he didn't know the procedures either. And don't penalize my license for something that you didn't know. So my, to my granddaughter, this agreed this letter that came from Bob to back with the owner of the building.
Who's the owner?
Bob. And Bob, uh-
Keep in mind, you all have three minutes.
Okay, yeah, you're trying to do it within your time here. Have they been hearing with a business license application?
Yeah, it's been a while, but yes.
So this is all lady yours?
Yes.
So did we vote on this?
Yes.
And it was denied?
Yes.
All right, well, go ahead.
The letter reads, Mr. and Mrs. Mayor, city administrator, I have owned the biz, the building, and one hundred and six seven two three Richmond for twenty years. I had no idea we went without decent, wrong space. I am sorry, we put the cart before the horse. I ran background and credit check before renting the space, so I thought that we could check out and applicant. Then if they qualify, rent them the space, then they go to get their business license. Again, I am sorry we worried about it wrong, but we now know how the process is to be done. Can we please move past starting the process wrong and move on with the process? I appreciate your time, I'm sorry if I had to text this message to you, and I'm out of town, thank you, Robert.
Mr. Champion, have you met with them at all?
It's been a while, but I do remember us meeting on the-
I don't quite remember, but I do remember we had denied for license, I don't know. You look familiar. Did you come when, did you come to the meeting?
I was here because it's like of the next door, you have a license.
Oh, yeah, but this was recently.
Yeah, it wasn't, yeah, it wasn't.
This is part of the time that, since I've been denied, because I was told why I was not now, I was trying to find why I was now, why I was those ways.
Well, I don't know, you know, this is a collective body, why they vote the way they do, that's, they have reasons. Each one of them might have a reason, but, so I can't speak for their vote of not accepting. But if that's what the decision was, and that's what we have to live with, that's what we're at.
But it happens, you see with me, because they saying that I rented this space before I came here.
Well, that in itself is a problem.
Right.
That's the problem, you know, you gotta stop by City Hall before you, and see if it's gonna be something that the city is going to, you know, fit into their plan and what they want for business.
I'm saying, but at least you get to move past the downtown.
Well, it doesn't quite work like that, you still just can't move past it because you're there. You know, that's why we're stopping by to tell you. You know, and then when you did come, they denied, and you're still there. I mean, it doesn't work like that. You just can't say, I'm gonna go in, I'm gonna set up shop and operate. The government body said, no, it's no.
Was that operating, that's what you're trying to understand, well, we need to walk to-
And it sounded like it worked, because he said, the fire guy stopped by and said, you're working.
Yeah, he stopped by.
So I mean, if you're there, then you're operating, that would be his table.
Yeah, it is to.
Well, it'd be mine too, if you're there, why are you, why are you up there operating? I mean, I, do you live there, or you stay there? You know what I'm saying? Well, I think you exhausted that, that's, you know, I mean, it's, the council has told you no. So that's when it ended.
Okay, so no problem, option for reconsideration, since it's over with and the board?
At this point, I mean, you can contact my office, we're not gonna take tonight with this. Your three minutes is up, you can contact my office, we can see if there ever be any reconsideration for it.
Who are you chatting, who did you have contact you?
I hadn't heard anything, I, you Mr. Champion?
Yeah, I run touch bases with them, man.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, I touch, and I speak with the older woman about it.
Yes. Okay.
Dr. Williams? Thank you, uh, Mr. Champion, for mentioning the environmental figures. And Mayor, because we have this intern program, Markham is getting more press. And yes, we're getting pulled from clinical coming year. And we have eight young people, sixteen to eighteen. And yes, it's about pushing and promoting the conservation pieces, but the program is more related to dealing with people and nature. Because I talked about not just seeing the tree, but seeing the person, the fundamental tree. And how to engage in such a manner that both benefit. So the intern program was a success, and we do thank Mr. Champion for being there on our first day to present to the- And we do thank, uh, Mr. Champion for being there on our first day to, uh, present to the interns. And the thing about it, every time we have it each year, unfortunately, I don't get a whole lot of folk from the area. So I'm saying it again, every summer for about six weeks, it's very often, we look at the young people, sixteen to eighteen. And we take applications, it's a competitive process to be involved in this. We had a young lady, sixteen years old, a Markham resident, who was one of our interns this year. I was excited about that. And she's going to be with us this weekend where we're having an event with the, uh, Public Library. We had the first session on June first at the Public Library for Art and Nature. I'm a nature journalist. And the second session is going to be at the Prairie on Saturday. Limited space, so first come, first served. But from ten to twelve thirty, we're going to be at Paintbrush Prairie. And there's going to be a young woman who wrote a book, I Can't Just Try, who will be storytelling and having some activities. So we're gonna be there from ten to twelve thirty, come over, we're gonna have refreshments as well. But really capitalizing and being a partner when it comes to being the Prairie capital of the Prairie state here in Markham, Illinois. So, um, I wanted to emphasize that. And anybody who wants to come, I left all the flyers at the office. But if you want more information, deborah.williams@tnc.org. Please email me. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Eugene Thompson. And I would like to just, uh, I was the biggest proponent, I like to say, I was the biggest proponent of the code inspection. But I've gotten, they don't give you a chance. I mean, thirty days to come up with money for the code inspection. They come out to the home and they, um, said that, well, okay, I can understand the driveway needs to be fixed. But does Markham fix there? You know, the tripping and falling? That, the, the, uh, the homes, uh, they said the, the government needed power washing, they needed cleaning up. Okay. That I can do. But the money to fix the driveway were cost. And they only give thirty days. And we need an extension for that. I mean, because that came up all of a sudden in the storm and then, you know, all of this stuff all at one time. And so they have to give, uh, an extension.
I'm sure they'll give you time, Ms. Ms. Eugene, though. I'll work with you.
Okay. Well, I have to talk to them. And then the house next door, uh, on one sixty-six Thirty-Eighth Winchester.
Thirty-Eighth?
It's vacant, yes. It's vacant and-
Is that's not the one on the very, uh, next to the vacant lot? I thought I saw some work going on over there.
Is there work going on? Oh, there is, okay.
Well-
I haven't, I haven't noticed it.
That, I think she's gonna help out. Somebody got, I thought I saw a dumpster or something over there in the driveway.
Well, on the gate, it's a lot of trees that keep growing over on our side and you constantly have to take it down.
Oh, okay, okay. We'll, we'll, we'll definitely work on that. I was kind of curious what was going on with it. I passed by it a couple of times. I saw, I couldn't, that's where I saw a dumpster, and I'm like, what's going on over here? We'll, we'll look into it tomorrow and whatever's on the fence line.
Okay, because they have had a number up there call and we've tried calling them.
No, we'll, we'll, we'll clear it up and then we'll, we'll just lean it or do whatever we're gonna do to-
Okay.
To take it down. Now, that's what I thought we were working on, was to tear it down.
I appreciate it.
I thought it was, was that-
You know, they, they, they got cut today. You know, they're gonna work out there cutting it, I'm cutting it today. So I'll find out.
Yeah, when you're, all lady, and then, uh, I'll work on coordinating with the all lady about if, if we're going to go ahead and take it and tear it down. That's what I thought we were doing.
It, it is, it is on the list.
I thought so, but I, but, but I wouldn't mind. I don't know why I thought that there was someone working on the property. I'm like, what's going on? So I'll find out tomorrow. It was on my list too.
Okay, and you'll give, uh, an extension on all files?
I can't do that tonight. I think we should talk with them, they'll work with you.
Yeah, we attract call at your office and I said-
Talk with, uh-
And I left my number and then they're gonna call me back.
Yeah, they'll work with you. They, yeah, they, they're not gonna, they'll work with you.
Okay, all right.
Let, let me or Mr. Champion know or, or y'all lady know.
Yeah, I want, yeah, I want to talk to you about the rain there.
Yes, I'm gonna get me one too. I'm gonna get me a rain bear.
Yeah, don't hesitate to say it.
He said, he said, he got two things to say. He said, he got-
Y'all doing, y'all doing y'all thing and giving the treatment. I see y'all working, I'm always in the hood. Always. My thing, which is that three to five ticket. I ain't got four of them, I didn't pay them all. It's that three to five ticket, man, and I don't, I don't know what that's about. I got a lot of cars. I'm, I'm, I'm a car junker. And I ain't got enough drivers.
Can, can we help you out?
Come on, man.
Can we help you out?
There, there were two hours, right there. I'm sure.
All right.
I'm trying to get a red ticket on my car and I'm done.
All right.
All right, we'll get it in the parking pass, please. Yeah, please, get you. I need, I need two.
Man, I don't know which car he did. You know, this day I saw him in a red. And the next day it was a yellow. Okay, I'll work with you.
Mr. Gray, we'll, we'll take care of you. We'll take care.
You gotta love it.
Mr. Gray, in three minutes.
Less.
Mr. Manager, Mr. Manager, Council. Thank you for the opportunity to, um, speak to you quickly.
Can't hear you.
Uh, first off, let me say thank you so very much, uh, all the women, Mr. Mayor, for showing up at my neighbor's funeral. It meant a lot, you know, it meant a lot to me. Um, uh, Mr. Manager, I appreciate, uh, taking care of my curb. Spilling me some dirt, taking, uh, filling that in that area down there. But I can't take it here.
They didn't do any, uh, restoration after they fixed the, the curb out of the street?
It's, it's not completely.
Okay. Oh, yeah, you have to take care of it.
So, so, but thank yous for the curb.
Oh, yeah, definitely. Yeah, yeah. We, we should finish that, that, that's a long time, but we'll fix that.
The other thing I want to say thank you for is for, thank you for the hump in my street. I have little kids across the street from me, doesn't affect me directly, but, um, people flying up and down my street at forty, fifty, sixty, seventy miles an hour racing, trying to get around, um, Wood Street. Lets me sleep at night, you know, with the kids across the street. The other thing is, um, uh, last but not least, I know that we'll, in two minutes. I know that ComEd is doing their work, they do a lot of things. I still have a couple of people on my block, elderly people, that need their power in. Called in on ComEd, I checked on them already. Uh, one of them is Mr. Reed. Okay, so if you could stand by and, you know, just say hi to him, I appreciate that.
Sure.
Um, and Mrs. Sesser, uh, we come to see you.
Okay, thank you.
Castro from Cuba. Good evening, everyone. First, I really want to appreciate you being here. And Aunt, really bless you, and have the gentleman and family. He's been doing a lot for us, and especially for me. I've been borrowed with three characters, another three words, three words. So thank you for having him on with me and thank you for participating in the whole process. I really appreciate that a lot. One of the reasons that I came in was for the taxes that I hear what she has to say. I've been here for seven years, I don't mark her. And I always told you, if you ever, you ever need any help, especially now that suddenly that many Latinos are over here in the Middle East. And I've been talking to many of them, telling them, I mean, it's, I mean, it's a battle because Markham is growing big on us.
Yes.
And it's disappointed that men do. Okay, my English is not so well, you believe me, we are many of our there who would speak fluent English in English when they can come. But I was going to keep pushing people. And pushing people to vote and to be a voice over here because Markham is becoming Latino too.
Yeah.
I really appreciate the time for that festival to certainly, and my chemotherapy, so I can access to many of these people. But yeah, my taxes were up three thousand eight hundred dollars. My husband wants to leave that house in court, and that breaks my heart. Because I know what he and it's impossible for us to do. So that breaks my heart, but I hear whatever she's saying, I will come and I will try to do whatever is possible, um, to, uh, help that I need to sort of. But one of the things that is maybe is not so important and maybe not many people would be interested in it. I was a teacher in my former company. And I really put a lot of emphasis in kids. I'm just wondering if somebody, maybe none now, but somebody can explain to me, why is that code enforcement for having a basketball hoop in a house? Neither in the front yard, neither in the street, neither in the grass, in the grass. But I have a basketball hoop. More than seven or eight kids come to play to my house. I have drinks, I have cookies, I have everything for the kids. Because the last thing that I want is kids to do is be in trouble or be doing things that they're not supposed to do. So many kooky kids from the block, they come to play with my son. And I always tell them, first you ask permission and then I let you play. If you don't, I will call the police. I'm sorry, I need to respect you. Even police officers, they see them playing in my house and they stop and they play with them and they encourage them to not have drugs and I use drugs and all of these. And that's mainly bringing up. But what is that instant? It has to be an important reason to not have these. Even my driveway is from here all the way to the wall. And my basketball hoop is close to where the lady in yellow is. It's not amazing that you have to give us tickets for that.
Yeah, you can have it in the front, but it can't be in the street.
Yes, I have it, and from a day came to my house, someone, and tried to give a ticket to my father.
Well, then, we'll-
It is not amazing.
No, and that doesn't, they, they, they should know better than that. We'll, we'll correct that, but it just can't be in the street, that's all.
Of course, that, that's-
Well, and, and we definitely don't want the swimming pool in front of the house.
No, of course, and that one, I agree with that. I totally agree with that one. Swimming pool, why would you, like, me or people like that?
Well, we had a few people here, so they should do it. So we had to put a postcard out, put a picture out for them.
Yeah, but you know what, I totally agree.
Yeah, because when we told them, they didn't, they didn't understand it, so.
Yeah, maybe you can maybe know we want to talk because I don't mind any fine.
No, we'll take care of it. Continue to talk with all women in here. Go ahead, all.
One of the things we talked, I've had some conversations, uh, with code enforcement, regards to what exactly is stated in this. I think we got a young-
We got some new ones that-
New bloods and-
Yeah, some new ones that are trying to learn and they-
They're born.
Yeah, they, they, they don't, they don't get that right.
You know, you talked about the story. The idea of not to have the basketball courts in the middle of the street.
In the street.
Where the traffic is logical.
Right.
I mean, we've got a long driveway.
So I will put it back for the while, thank you.
Yeah, you put it out, but, you know, if you just don't want us to go into the street, the basketball hoop is fine, you know?
Of course, sure. And you know what, um, I know I keep talking to you, we really need a football, and it's more than saying to us, please, in the block, and I've been asking for this for more than three years. I'm just afraid because these people don't have, like, a lot of young people do say that.